Christie, you're unmuted. Can you check and see if you can hear us and we can hear you? Councilwoman Strater, can you let me know if you can hear me?
I can definitely hear you, Chris. Thanks.
Okay, can you say that again? I heard you, but I saw you but didn't hear you.
Hey, Chris, can you hear me? Let me give it a minute. Can you hear me now? I can hear you. Let me see. Test one. Testing.
Hey, Councilwoman, I'm not hearing you, but I can see you're talking, so I'm trying to fix that now. Okay, can you check one more time?
Sure, Chris, can you hear me now?
Nothing. I'll call IT.
Uh-oh. I think, well, you can't hear me, but I think we have a few more people joining on Zoom.
That's it. So it's green, and then you talk like that.
You have to make sure you can hear me.
Are you guys out there? Maybe not.
Okay, we're doing another sound check. If you can hear me, give a thumbs up.
I can hear you.
Do not hear you.
Okay.
I can hear you as well.
Oh, hey, Joe. Yeah, I tested it on my end.
Okay, still working on it, Liz, sorry.
Okay, I know, just, I guess.
Can you try to talk?
Yep, I can hear you.
I'm coming in, thanks.
Can he hear you, Joe?
Apparently not.
I was gonna say, I need the Joe Borton plan when we're here. I need to upgrade my little Mint Mobile. I can't really talk to him, but Alexis is also planning to dial in, so I'm gonna email him to give him a heads up.
All right, he'll get it figured out.
Councilwoman, can you hear us now?
Yeah, I can hear you, Chris. Can you hear me?
We do not have you still. Try again, I'm trying some volume things.
Okay.
Councilman Borton, can you try to speak again?
Yep, I can hear you fine. Can you hear me?
I don't think they can hear us, Joe.
Nope.
No. Maybe they could send us a dial-in, but I'm a little worried. I don't know if we can hear the panel on Zoom either.
Yeah, maybe not.
Yeah, I don't know if Triggum I know, but I think one of their commissioners is also dialing in too.
There's a phone dial-in, I guess. We could, old school, just.
Oh, yeah, is there? Do you know where that?
Call in. I think it was on the agenda.
Okay.
Zoom phone call.
Yeah, we could try, could try that. Let me put it on mute and give that a try.
I'd do that as well.
There's another sound check. Commissioner Strater. Commissioner Pickering, anybody can speak and see if we can hear you?
I can hear you.
Yep, I could hear you. Can you hear us, though?
Very, some are super hot and some you can't.
Yeah, they can't hear us.
That's a little bit better, maybe. Hi, Alexis, how's it going?
Hi, sorry, I had a neighborhood meeting run a little over.
I can hear Lake Luke Cavanagh barely.
I was gonna make a really good joke about you guys doing a way better job than us for your Zoom settings, but thanks for making that not happen.
Trying. It's tough when you have both, you know, two meeting formats and a panel. That's kind of tough. Yes, well, I'm gonna try to dial in and see, maybe that's, or is that just throwing too many complications in?
Yeah.
Test, test.
Hey, Chris. Can you hear us yet? No. Shoot.
Have they not been able to hear you at all since joining?
Yeah, I know, they haven't had any luck, and Joe Borton was on too, and they couldn't hear him as well. So, he was driving, so I don't know if he might show up in person, if he can make it in time, but maybe they could dial us in, I don't know. I just texted Robert to tell him.
Yeah, Ken's not checking his phone.
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear us?
Yeah, so you guys, can you guys hear us when we're talking on this side?
No.
I can just hear you.
I can hear you only.
Okay, because we could, I could interpret if we can make it so you guys can hear, so you could, you could communicate through me for anything if you would, if you think that would work.
Whatever you guys want to do.
If we can make it so you can hear what's being said.
Okay.
I could, I could also drive over there, but it would also take me like 15 to 20 minutes, so I would feel bad.
Hello, can you guys hear now through this? Hello, Alexis, Liz.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah.
Trigg, can you talk through the mic, Trigg, or Brad?
Yeah.
Okay, so I can interpret through them for any questions.
All right.
Sure.
Yeah, so I'll communicate with them for any questions, but they can hear what's going on in the room.
Does everybody have mics, though?
Yes, everyone has mics.
Can they all just pick in their mics?
Yeah, we will. Everyone will speak into mics, so you can hear what's going on.
Thank you.
Okay. So are we ready to try this version? Okay. Well, we will go ahead and call the meeting order, or the record is September 20th, 2021, at 5:45 PM. Just want to make sure guests on the line can hear us, okay?
Yep.
All right, we will begin today's meeting with roll call attendance.
Last, the clerk to do roll call attendance. Working better? I would just ask everyone to speak in their mic, please, to turn it on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Perro. Councilman Huglan.
Here.
Councilman Burn. Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh. Mayor Simison.
Here.
Okay, I'll call this our part of the meeting tonight to order, and we do have a full quorum, all five of us are present, thank you.
Next item for the meeting is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burn.
The agenda is published.
Second motion, motion second to adopt the agenda as published. Is there a discussion on the motion?
If not, I'll say by saying aye.
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 Agenda is adopted. First item up will be the multi-use pathways for pedestrians and bicyclists. I know that this was a conversation or an issue that came up in a workshop as well, in a letter that was sent as well, and information that was provided back to the city yourself, but we would like to have a continued conversation. And I don't know if there's any information that ACHD would like to continue to provide at this point in time or for just a discussion.
We do have some information. We received a little more formal presentation that answered some of our questions, at least the remaining questions that we had from Gary Inselman, and we've asked him to present that tonight. Gary.
Mr. Mayor, is he able to share his screen at all?
Yes, we will get the screen shared.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Need to screenshot.
Screen share. Screen share.
There we are. Right. And you're going to control. Okay, go ahead. Thank you. So I'll give you a, and go through this quickly as we can. Some background information, when we were designing our Fairview and Locust Grove intersection project in the segment of Fairview out to Eagle, our commission had required us revise the on-street bike lanes to raised bike lanes and then further directed us to modify designs on our other arterial road projects to remove on-street bike lanes. So after that, we engaged consultant Kittleson Associates to work with us and come up with some standard drawings to help guide the design of these pathways. Traditional guidance in the United States through ASHTO, there's conflicts with multi-use pathways. And one being that motorists often do not notice out of direction bikes from the norm. Got the difference in speeds from bikes. Now we've added scooters and e-bikes to the mix of this. Vehicles blocking the side street crossing waiting to enter the main road. Attempts to require bicyclists to stop or yield are typically not effective. Continuing from that list, the bicyclists on side paths are not in the normal scanning area of drivers. Traffic control devices have been shown to be ineffective in changing driver or path user behavior. And for these and other reasons, ASHTO cites these reasons to look at other types of bike facilities, typically on-street bike lanes. We didn't have that choice. We're given the direction to look at facilities that are off the street, so the raised bike lanes are multi-use pathways. So we worked to mitigate these potential conflicts through our designs. From ASHTO, this exhibit shows some typical driver viewing area issues with multi-use pathways. Driver A is looking for traffic to the left, so a contraflow cyclist is not in the field of view. Driver B is looking for traffic ahead, so the contraflow cyclist is not in the field of view. Driver C is looking for turning traffic on the main road and traffic on the minor road, so a cyclist riding with traffic is not in their field of view. ODOT, this figure shows ten potential conflict points with crossings at an intersection with the multi-use pathway. Did find a study from the National Center for Biotechnology Information and National Library for Medicine, which is a US government agency. They actually looked at twenty years of crash and injury data for Montreal. As I said before, typical engineering guides in the United States has discouraged bicycle facilities that resemble cycle tracks, including parallel side paths and sidewalk bikeways, suggesting that these facilities and cycle tracks are more dangerous than bicycling in the street. Data from this study suggests the injury risk on bicycling and cycle tracks and side pass is less than biking in the street. And the accident probability also decreased at intersections where the cycle track approaches are deflected away from the main roadway between two and five meters. This is a figure from the Massachusetts DOT. The highlighted statement states that similar to roundabouts, a recessed crossing can reduce conflicts at the intersection crossings with the pathway. This places the crossing in the driver's field of view straight ahead. From the Michigan DOT, they actually, the safety analysis of six years of bicycle and related crashes in two counties, and then a survey of the residents to develop side path intersection and crossing treatment guide. With the offset geometry, a motorist turning from the parallel roadway more directly faces a bicyclist in the crossing rather than the conventional designs that position a bicyclist closer to the travel lanes in the motorist blind spot. This is a complete streets design manual from Hampshire County, Massachusetts, again showing recessed crossing. And then you can see in the figure in the middle that the crossing is put a little further back on the higher speed roadways. So Kittleson Associates developed these design standards for us. They include recommended buffer widths for the desired level of traffic stress. That's how far away the pathway will be set from the travel lanes, the travelway. At a signalized intersection, the crossing is controlled by the signal, so the pathway doesn't move. It looks like a typical intersection, just you got the ten-foot pathway and the ten-foot pedestrian ramps. Crossing at the roundabouts are the same as they're treated today. At all of our roundabout designs, we've brought the bikes up onto the sidewalk, and it's widened to a multi-use pathway width to get them out of the circular roundabout, and then they cross the roadways as this drawing depicts. So at the side street intersections, the distance will be site-specific depending upon the characteristics of the main road, the side street, and the pathway. The initial guidance is based on the speedway of the arterial at forty to forty-five miles an hour. We're looking to recess it back as shown in this diagram. Our pedestrian advisory group actually commented that they liked recessed crossing as shown in this detail and thought that they should be built at this distance at all locations. For speeds of thirty-five miles per hour or less, that distance setback decreases, but again, it'll be site-specific depending on the characteristics of the main roadway, side street, and the pathway. So to summarize advantages of the setback crossing, it removes the right-turning vehicle conflicts at the crossings, removes conflict from left-turning vehicles at the crossings. Bicyclists and others, users, slow down approaching the side street. Allows vehicles on the side street to yield at the pedestrian bike crossings separate from looking for gaps in vehicle traffic on the main roadway. And it provides a safer street crossing for all users. So in conclusion, we are looking to design facilities for all users as directed by our commission. We'll design facilities that fit the environment and characteristics of the, of the area. We did review these details with our pedestrian advisory group and bicycle advisory committee just last week. And following that, we're going to finalize these drawings and use them to advance our current designs. That I could stand for any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
Gary, thank you for that presentation. I just, I need just one clarifying question that I have. Can the folks remote, can they hear me? Good. So my question that I have, Gary, is I, I, I don't, I don't mind having a recessed multi-use pathway that, depending on what the speed limit is, it draws further back into the intersection. I think that's great. I don't have a problem with that at all. My concern, and I believe other people's concerns, is when there's a car, you know, when this pathway goes behind cars that are also at that intersection. Do you have any information in regard to that? Did your data or did Kittleson or any of the folks that did your data, did they mention anything about that? Yeah, parked that are at the intersection stacked. You know, originally, when this first was brought to us a while ago, the design had, for example, if it was a side street, I guess that's what was mentioned in the presentation, you had a car that was not parked, but stopped at a stoplight or a, or a signalized intersection. And the multi-use pathway came down to the intersection and came behind the first stop car and then went back on the other side of the, of the intersection. Our Transportation Commission and our council had concerns about visibility, like you guys have concerns about or what the data suggests that the, that, the visibility issues and what that looks like. And so I was wondering, in these new designs that you just showed, is, are these multi-use pathways going behind that first stacked stop car? Or, or is the stacking, or is the cars moved back? And even though the pathways are recessed, is, are, are the cars parked? Or not parked, but are they stopped where, where the pathway is in front of the cars, not behind at least one stacked car? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so. The, with the path crossing recessed on the side street, there would be room for a vehicle in front of the crossing to then advance into the main roadway. In most cases, on the slower speed roads, the pathing, the path crossing would be a little closer. A large vehicle would probably hang over into that crossing some, but a standard-sized car would probably fit. The idea is to have that crossing back so that the vehicles entering the roadway, the people in that crossing are in their direct line of sight and view. Pathway users slow down. Ones approaching from inside a subdivision, say, heading towards the arterial, if there's people crossing, they're to stop before the crossing, wait for it to be clear, advance forward if it's clear, to then stop at the stop sign and then turn into the roadway.
Did your, did your data or did the studies suggest? So I guess what you're saying is that in the studies and the data that you presented, the folks that did it didn't see any problem or didn't see any visibility issues for cars. If there's a, if there's a stop car at that, at that intersection, and there's a car that's, you know, turning, that may be turning into that intersection, that may not be able to see, you know, pedestrians on, on bikes or walking, going behind that first stop car. Do they, they, did the data or the studies suggest any concerns with visibility issues there?
Did not.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Gary, sorry, I'm, I'm not super bright when it comes to this, so appreciate maybe the, asking a dumb question. Walk me through the difference between traditional bike lane, a multi-use pathway, and the side paths that you kind of referenced in your discussion. What are, what are the major differences between the three, and why is one a better option than another based on either speed or, or location?
Councilman, the, this traditional bike lane is just the five or six feet along the side of the road at the same level as the roadway, separated with an eight-inch white stripe. In recent years, we added a two-foot painted buffer in some areas. You'll see that in some areas, you get a little more separation from the bicycle lane user and the, and the automobiles. But they're on the same, they're on the street level. So traveling with traffic, ideally, that's, they're supposed to be. So they are visible to the people traveling in their direction. There are issues with right hooks, the bicyclist will call it, where someone's turning right and right in front of a bicyclist, or you'll have issues with the left-turning vehicles quite often. So that's why, one of the reasons our commission asks us to look at off-street options. As I use the terms in this, because that one study used several different terms, side path, multi-use path. It's the same thing. It's a facility off the road, behind the curb, at a different elevation. They're typically minimum of ten feet wide if it's for both directions, heads and bikes or other users. Ideally, twelve feet or wider would be more ideal. And so those then are set back away from the roadway, some distance. In our standards, we give different buffer widths for the different level of traffic stress we're trying to achieve, or in our case, all users is what we're trying to do. That eight to eighty is the, that group.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up if I may.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Gary, is, is the district then kind of evolving to decide path, the multi-use pathway kind of format? Does it have its, I guess, is there criteria where the highway district is looking to do that, and other criteria where you're trying to keep a traditional bike lane? What's, what's the matrix on that?
If I might. We have decided pretty much that that is going to be our, our standard unless there's a reason not to. And we expect Gary and the staff to tell us when there is a reason not to. The, one of the biggest reasons that we have decided to go with this is because we have been told that that's the configuration that parents will allow their kids to ride to school on, to the store on, to the library on, thus reducing congestion.
And if I might just add, one of the things we hear a lot of is, well, no one's using these bike lanes. And it's like, well, you wouldn't use these on-street bike lanes on arterials, on Fairview and whatnot. It's a waste of space because it's, it's, and Gary used the term level of stress. Well, we've now developed a, a matrix, a, a measurement system that will determine, okay, we want to reach a level of stress. So it's not necessarily a specific type of design, as much as a measurement, whether it'll be used, because it's just a waste of taxpayer money to build a bike lane that's, that's just not safe, and it's not going to be used. In fact, what it does, it, it just makes the profile of the road that much wider and invites people to speed. So we, we, we're moving towards this, not just because we think it's a great idea, but because we're also moving towards measuring what will work and what won't. And in fact, we're very proud of the fact that our staff member, Ryan Head, who helped develop this all this year, has been nominated for an American Planning Association Award for his incredible work in helping us incorporate those measurements in, in facilities. You know, we're responsible for the right-of-way, for movement of all kinds of people in the right-of-way, but we want them to be safe, whatever the mode is that they're using.
Mr. Mayor.
I've got a, was that Alexis?
Yeah.
Something coming from Alexis.
Yes, so, but back to, are you going to translate for me?
Yeah, so I'm gonna just talk to me.
Okay, good. But Gary can describe the different speed limits and variations of when it's ideal to have a pathway versus a bike lane. So you can, but to answer Luke's question, there are some key metrics that we will be using to show whether or not a traditional separated bike lane or protected bike lane is used. So you might want to punch it back to Gary. He can answer those specifics a little bit better.
The, the request is to punch it back to Gary to ask some of the specific metrics that are being used to make these determinations. Did I get enough of that right for?
Kind of, there, there's like a speed limit, there's those types of things that tell us whether or not it's safe for a on-street bike lane versus a pathway.
Pathways.
At this time, don't believe we're designing any new projects with on-street bike lanes. I know we've had a request from Eagle to make sure that they're on-street unfolding feather, but they're after a different type of user. Or door. But the rest of our projects, we're designing multi-use pathways for the raised bike lanes, as you may have seen in the concepts for the Fairview project looks for Eagle.
I have a follow-up question, and I appreciate the fact that we are getting away from bike lanes on street, this to your exact point, our type of community, it makes sense. And maybe I'm not correcting this, but I think consistency is important in travel lanes. So I live over by the project on Eagle, where you put in these, in some parts- So I live over by the project on Eagle where you put in these, in some parts of that project, in other places in the project, you didn't. So I guess again, kind of going back to, I assume that that was a decision of a right-of-way or something else, but why would you make these improvements to a majority but not all in that same road section? Consistency is the thing that I think is important personally, if we're going to go down one, one way or not.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. On, on that particular project, um, we were making changes to that design very late in the process after we'd acquired right-of-way, trying to, uh, accommodate, uh, the, the practice in the field as best we knew it at that time while we were still developing these standards. And for that very reason is why we developed these design standards for that consistency moving forward. But this pro, this project was already designed with multi-use pathways and then we're trying to look at the intersection treatment a little later in the game. So, uh, because of some right-of-way constraints, some are a little different than, uh, what we would do today. We are going to redesign and build one of the crossings at Rome. We're looking at a different, uh, different treatment there. We had some utility constraints and other issues that we're working through to improve that, that crossing.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Gary, for the presentation. Helps understand what you guys looked at to get to the point that you are. It's, it's helpful to have that understanding as well. Um, two questions. One is, uh, this does not apply to collectors, I assume. Those may still be on-street bike lanes that, as of the lower speeds and whatnot, I would assume. But also, um, you had a slide up there, showed at grade and then raised. And I'm, I was trying to think raised, okay. I, give me a definition of raised, what that looks like. I just couldn't picture that.
Uh, Councilman, yes, the raised crossing is an alternative where that would be, uh, more appropriate depending on the characteristics of the users in the area. Typically it would raise it to the same level as the pathway approaching the side street so that, like a, it's not the right terminology, like a speed table or something where it's raised up so the car has to physically go up and over. Obviously that requires, um, coordination with your fire department and other emergency service providers, make sure that they're on board with that. Um, but that's a, an option that is, uh, in the standards for the appropriate locations.
Oh, go ahead. I was just going to say on the raised crosswalks, just take a look at 11th Street when they get built, and you might want to consider some in downtown Meridian. It's, it's a lower, uh, speed one, but the design that CCDC is using is going to have a raised, um, bike lane and then the, and then the sidewalk. So you'll see it's actually something that will be separated and raised.
You know, and if I may add, the, um, the, several of the kind of motivating factors that have led ACHD to, you know, move in the direction of these, um, multi-use pathways i- is in part the, um, the on-street bike paths, uh, that we build and we see that they, in many places, don't get a lot of use. And so we think on the one hand, um, you know, of course, there's the, there's the cost of that in the first place. Lot of people don't use them simply because they don't feel safe, even though, you know, and, you know, people's perceptions are a huge part of it. So the, the hope and the intent is that with the, uh, multi-use pathways, that they will get used more. Uh, so that, uh, in that respect, uh, we'll feel like the, um, you know, the expenditure is, uh, more worthwhile than, than building something that doesn't get used. At the same time, you know, in thinking as to, I've concluded, there's no perfect solution. There really isn't. Um, I think this is a better solution than what we've had before. We're never going to have a perfect solution unless we have complete separation between bicycles and vehicles in all cases. And of course, the cost of that would be astronomical and that's, that's not a practical possibility. So, um, there are pros and cons of both approaches and we feel like, uh, the multi-use pathways is the better of, of the two options and that's why we've gone in that direction.
Mr. Mayor, it's Liz.
We have Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you. Um, the question I have is, when it come, love multi-use pathways, but when it comes to recessing the crossing, from a safety perspective for pedestrians, is it, is it always better, no matter the speed, to have it further away from the roadway? In other words, an increased setback is always better?
The question is, regardless of speed, is an increased setback always the preferred safest decision? Councilwoman Schrader, thumb up if I got enough of that correctly.
I guess the short answer would be yes, but the distance of that setback would be dependent on speed and the other variables associated with the project in the area for these types of facilities.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Yeah, just to clarify, is it that we can get away with a reduced setback because the speed is lower? From a, purely from a pedestrian safety perspective, is it always better to have an increased setback regardless of the speed?
I think he answered yes, but again, repeating, regardless of the speed, is it better to have an increased setback? For pedestrians? Arterials is what I'm hearing from inside here.
Sounds like a yes?
Yes.
Any additional questions or?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
Thank you. Going back to Councilman Burns' question regarding placement of the first vehicle at a recessed intersection, um, just kind of thinking through how traffic would flow in that situation and, and not only is there concern about pedestrians that might be behind the vehicle, so, um, vehicles that are coming off the arterial, making a right, may not see pedestrians coming behind a vehicle that's heading the opposite direction. But are there, is there, was there any data done on whether there's actually more motorist accidents in that situation? Because if you have, you have a vehicle turning right, for example, and they've got to stop, um, and they have to stop in order for pedestrians to cross, either stopping, they don't, that's the, uh. That's a question for Gary.
No, we don't have any data on if there's increased vehicular accidents in those situations, but that's one of the reasons on the higher speed facilities, you set the crossing a little bit further back so the car can get fully onto that side street and yield or stop for the users of the multi-use pathway crossing and be out of the, uh, the travelway on the arterial.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pro.
It would seem to me that there would be a lot of rear ending when that would happen because the second vehicle that's following first vehicle off of the arterial onto the side street, uh, if that first vehicle isn't paying attention that there's a pedestrian in that walkway because it's so recessed, they're going to slam on their brakes and the vehicle behind them at a, at a signalized intersection is going to hit them. I just, seems to me, am I, like to hear my other council member stop, but it seems to me there'd be a lot of fender benders with that design because the crosswalk is recessed enough that perhaps the second vehicle isn't seeing it, that's behind the first turning in or stopping because, um, that they're, you know, the, I don't know what the, I don't know what the distance is from corner to the recessed crosswalk, but I assume it's going to be, if it's an effort one vehicle, then I assume that's far enough back that vehicles following that first off of the arterial won't notice the pedestrian either.
Um, Councilman, like I said, there isn't any data on an increase in vehicular accidents or that types, that type of situation, but you would have the same thing at the crossing where up closer, if someone stops in the arterial waiting for someone in the crosswalk, you hope they stop, then the car behind them, which is traveling at a much greater rate of speed because they're on the arterial at speed, has to stop. So you can have that same situation or worse in, with the vehicles trying to stop in the arterial waiting for users of the, in the crosswalk to get out of their way. This at least provides opportunity for that first vehicle to turn. Uh, part of the design is a little tighter radiuses so that they're turning slower without the bicycle lanes on the street. Curbs are, are closer in, so just with that, you have to take that turn much slower because you don't have that extra space from the bicycle lane to track across at a different angle. With all of those factors in mind, the, the car that's turning into the side street is traveling at a lower rate of speed. Now the users of the pathway are in their direct line of vision. They can stop if they need to or continue on if the crossing is clear.
Mr. Mayor, I'm remembering back to some work sessions that we had, had when we were discussing, uh, some treatments on Fairview length, for the whole length of the road. Uh, and we asked for a whole lot of accident data and discovered that the vast majority of collisions on Fairview, uh, were more damaging to the guy who hit the rear end or their ego than their car. Um, they were pretty cheap, pretty inexpensive and there were, there were a ton of them, but it was mostly when somebody was slowed down to go into an access point like a used car lot or, uh, Axiom or wherever, and then somebody else who wasn't paying any attention ran up their, their exhaust pipe and, uh, that's going to continue no matter what, fortunately at a much slower rate of speed.
Council, any additional questions, comments? Yeah, I, I think hopefully the commission hears, I think there's still some concern from the city of Meridian about this approach. I don't think that as a body, we're bought in that this is the best appropriate treatment for our community. Um, understanding what Commissioner McKinney said, that there's a lot of choices in a lot of this, you know? And, and choices have pros and cons and just like, you could have multi-use pathways with crossing that the same place crosswalks do and there's choice in that standpoint. Um, whether or not in the future, what occurs, can't say, but we just hope the commission keeps an, an open eye and ear to the city's preferences when it comes to these type of issues and, you know, part of me wants to say if it's good enough in one area, go back and fix the area where you didn't have enough right-of-way. Other part says, I don't really think it's needed, so don't. But consistency is important and part of transportation network. That's what I would encourage you personally to make sure that we are doing is being consistent in what we do, where we do it and not making shortcuts or decisions on the fly. Then, is a, I know that was a challenge, it was given back to us, that it was too late to make decisions and determinations on other things, especially on Eagle Road at those point in time. So look forward to working with you on these, keep an eye on what, how these can help.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask one more question?
Yes, Councilwoman Pro.
What's the timeline, uh, for the district to approve the design? And can you share a little more about the process to get there?
Councilwoman, we will, uh, work with our consultant to finalize these design standards in the coming weeks. We are utilizing them currently and, um, when they're finalized, they will be, uh, as part of our design process for our projects or we weren't planning a public hearing or anything. It's a design detail.
And it can be a, uh, three to five-year process on the projects and arterials, so there will be plenty of time.
Item two, 2022 legislative coordination efforts. Uh, this was a follow-up from a conversation this last, I think made, following up on last year's legislative session and the district indicated that they would come forward and share with us what your thoughts and priorities and plans for the upcoming legislative session was. And so we were hoping we could get some idea if there is something the district is pursuing or moving forward with, um, so hopefully if it, we can be partners.
Probably the, the single largest issue that we would like to take to the legislature this year by way of, uh, uh, changes in statute has to do with impact fees. Uh, we want a greater, I mean, development, uh, any kind of a development application is going to impact a whole lot more than just the traffic in front of that development. And we want the ability to, uh, utilize impact fees for other costs that are indirectly related to that developments. And specifically, there's some ones that are glaring and that's the, uh, treatments for pedestrians, bicyclists and other means of transportation, maybe downstream from where the development is. And I like to make it real succinct and quick and that's curb gutters, sidewalks, bicycle facilities. And right now, unless it's directly attributable to the development, uh, we can't spend impact fees on that kind of expense and we'd like to be able to. Um, this year, we wound up at the end of the season with about $8 million of impact fees we couldn't even spend and that's a crying shame because there are a lot more than $8 million of sidewalk gaps and things like that out there in the county. Uh, you've seen a ton of them that we've filled along Five Mile, Cloverdale and some of those other areas where you're approving development right now. And, uh, there will be a bunch more in the next couple of years because of, uh, budget motion that we had this year. Uh, and we could do a whole lot more, a whole lot quicker if we had that kind of a legislative, uh, statutory change. It's only a matter of, uh, a few words being changed in the current statute.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, just to add on, there's so many examples and I'm sure you hear of it a lot where, you, you know, an area's functioned pretty well and then a new development comes in a little further on down the road. And so the need for a crosswalk, the need to put in sidewalks now, uh, the need for something to make it a little safer, uh, you know, we, we've been getting a lot of requests to upgrade the crossings at Pleasant Valley Elementary School and, uh, in Boise on Amity. Uh, and it's largely because there's now new traffic going in front of those schools, more traffic. Um, but the developers that are, um, obviously helping to create that, that added traffic, um, their impact fees can't be spent to improve those crossings. Uh, but they can only be spent under current law to add more lanes to a particular road or to widen an intersection. So it, it is crazy. Exactly. So, so what we'd like to do is to, to give us the flexibility, trust us on the local level, we're not going to abuse this authority, let us use the impact fees to address the impacts of growth. And if you don't know what the impacts of growth are, I'm sure when you go knocking on doors in any neighborhood, they'll say, this is how this particular new development is impacting this neighborhood. We'd like to be able to use that money instead of saying, well, get in the back of the line. The only thing we can, only money we can use to, to address those is property taxes and the list is extraordinarily long. So anything you can do to deliver the legislators from your, from Meridian would be fantastic if you can, can help us convince them to add that, that language into the statute. I think when the statute was first written 30 years ago, it didn't sort of think through that aspect of it. Uh, but today, we're dealing with it. Um, and, you know, sooner or later, we're going to build out all the arterials, won't have anything else to spend it on, but we'll still have new growth. So we'd like to, anything you can do to help us would be great.
Or staff, or that, was there anything else that we ought to bring up on this particular At least that you want to talk about today? At least that you want to talk about today? Oh, local option. Yeah, well, okay. Yeah. If that gets addressed or introduced, you know, we could use all the support we can get.
In, in fact, there's money being lined up. Congressman Simpson is, hopefully this earmark will get through. We've got other federal monies, we've got the VRT and the city of Boise. So the priority high-capacity corridor is State Street. That's sort of the model that we'll be able to look at. And, but of course, the key is, can we, can we afford to operate it? You know, if we get all the capital expenditures to put it in place, can we afford to operate it without a local option? And I think that's, until we get that one moving, then we can address ones on the rail corridor and other, other areas. But we, I think, we, we're 20 years behind the curve. We really need to. And all this FTA money that is being put into the federal budget shouldn't just be going to other states. Some of it should be coming here.
There's another thing, Mr. Mayor, and that is, in a few years, the Safe Roots to School money is going to that particular bill that enabled us to have the vehicle registration fee increase, which is a local option, will sunset, and it'll all be gone. And we won't have money for congestion management or safe routes to school any longer. And the reason that when we, we tried to float a bill, well, this was a voter initiative, to allow us to extend that without the sunset. And it became obvious very quickly, once we thought for sure we were, that was going to prevail with the voters. And then it became, something became obvious that we hadn't considered, and that was the fact that heavy truckers don't, heavy trucks don't pay any fees. And so that offended, and rightly so, the, the voters. We were defeated by a small margin, but it was still a defeat for something we thought, particularly me, thought was going to probably win by a landslide. If we cannot convince the legislature to include fairness, and it's a two-step process, they need to change the statute that will allow voters to decide who pays that fee. They won't even do that. And that's a really sad thing. So it's like some of our friends that we all know like to say that there is no such thing as local government in Idaho. It ends at the state level. And I say that a lot, and a lot of my friends in the legislature cringe when I do, and if this is reported, they'll cringe again, but it's true.
Mr. Mayor?
Another topic that we've had discussion about is a dedicated funding source for public transportation. That's, that's, and then the other day when we had our meeting at Compass, a lot of things came up. I know you had a lot of ideas. And so I think 389, I know you had the suggestion to just repeal it. And then we had the discussion about citing specific things that we would like to see in that bill, and some mitigation, and rather than just ask them to come on out and repeal it, come back with some type of solutions. What, what's not working? Why? You know, what would you suggest going forward? And like I say, be part of the solution. Talked about the registration fee, fuel tax, you know, several things. So I know we're just starting our discussion, so it would be helpful to hear from you and your council what things that are on your radar that you would like to see going forward.
Mr. Pickering, you were also trying to speak.
Oh, I was similar to what Commissioner May was saying. I would like to know what you guys would like to collaborate on.
And if we're speaking, I'm not hearing anything. Looks like we're frozen.
Can you hear me now? Yes?
Yes.
Oh, perfect. Oh, I was just going to say, echoing Commissioner May's thoughts, I would like to know what you guys, what, what would you guys like to collaborate with us on in terms of policy-wise?
She's echoing what Sheriff May just said in terms of collaboration on issues from our standpoint. Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Pearl.
It's my understanding that a lot of the opposition, especially when it comes to dedicated funding sources for public transportation and traffic issues that are really unique to the Treasure Valley, receive a lot of opposition from legislative rural areas. So can you talk to us about how you approach that and what you expect?
We've talked a little bit about making assignments to each one of us as commissioners to take a list of legislators and start to discuss this with them. I have taken the liberty myself to start this, and when I sit down, for instance, with one of the Senator from Mountain Home, the way I started the conversation was, why do you hate Ada County? And they don't want to address, what do you mean, why do I hate Ada County? And, you know, with a smile on my face, we can, you know, direct the conversation to where I wanted to go. And we don't hate Ada County. I would never vote against that. Well, certain people in the legislature won't even let you see this. And then I named some names and asked them to contact them. And it's not in the Senate, it's in the House, but this is something that we're going to go this route with some one-on-one this year. And I've, I've started it with emails and phone calls already.
And I would, I would just add that we need a unified Treasure Valley. That's about, what, a quarter of the legislature right there. But we have opposition in the Treasure Valley. People from, legislators from Ada County. And so we need to work together, get them all on board, because it makes it extraordinarily difficult to make these kind of investments. So anything you can do to help. So I think if the rest of the state recognizes Treasure Valley is united in this, I think, I think we'd get a lot, a lot further.
I can't speak for the council, but I think when it comes to funding for transportation, that's something I can always do, kind of support. Number one issue in Meridian are residents. So we need to continue to find ways to provide for expansion of roads in this part of the county. Personally, that's where I can say I can be supportive and work together, but I think it is, the important part is that we know what you guys are, what your priorities are and where that is. I don't know how, how much it is working with the county highway or the road, the road group, like we have AIC, you have the Highway District Association. That's where a lot of the issues are, for us are formed and developed.
We're joining that group again, and I'll be, Alexis and I will be attending their convention in November, unless something drastic happens with the lockdown or something. And that'll be one of the focus points that we address the whole time we're there. Right, Alexis?
Was that to me, Commissioner Goldthorpe?
Yes, that was Alexis.
Sorry, my husband was talking to me really quick. I'm feeling like the, the trip up there isn't probably going to happen for me at least, but I do have, I do plan, if I'm not there, to continue to talk with folks within that.
I would, if any of the.
I'll let you and Commissioner Goldthorpe talk about that. Okay, yeah.
I just, I just wanted to reiterate that I would really be interested in hearing what the priorities of your council, maybe that discussion still needs to happen, but as soon as you come up, we're still fleshing out our ideas and priorities. So I think that's communicate.
I think the priority is probably will ground property tax and the impacts at 389 right now from the city's perspective. That's probably one of the biggest things. And again, what does that look like, working through that process? But it's the open lines of communication, so we're not talking about this at the Capitol in February. We want to be locked up hopefully before then, so let's get the lines of communication open.
Great. And one of the, oh, go ahead.
Have Mary use your mic.
General consensus out there. And so look forward to having those conversations.
And one of the biggest ways to take the pressure off the property taxes is reforming the impact fee statute, just to circle back, because all that stuff falls back on the property tax. And the more we can address with, let development, let growth pay for, pay for these things, the better.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Schrader?
Yeah, just want to reiterate, appreciate the focus on the Linder Road overpass, the renewed focus on pedestrian safety especially, and the impact fees. I'm very supportive of them pursuing that and appreciate that focus. We've got a new high school and getting that wrapped up as well, but those are the things I would mention.
Councilman Schrader wants to say she appreciates the efforts on Linder Road overpass, pedestrian safety, and impact fees. Yes? Okay, thank you. All right, so next up, item three, Idaho Transportation Highway 16 update.
Paul's going to speak to us. He's nervous. He always takes lots of bullets on this one.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. President, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Tom Laws. I'm the Planning Supervisor with ACHD. And just like President Goldthorpe said, I'll just be providing a little information about ITD's effort with Highway 16. I'll divide this into three different sections. First, talk a little bit about the project phasing that ITD is looking at with Highway 16. I'll talk about their proposed timing, and then how does, how does this impact the integrated five-year work plan process with ACHD. So first, over, to give you an overview, when ITD talks about Highway 16, it's broken up into three phases. The first phase was actually complete back in 2014, and that included the section between State Street or Highway 44 and Chindon Highway 2026. Following that, there's been, there's two additional phases, the, the next one being the continuation of the following five miles out to the interstate. And with this, with this phase, it includes three signalized intersections, expanding the one at Chindon Highway 2026, adding one at Eustick Road, and then another one at Franklin Road. In addition to this, there is a third phase that would then go back to those three intersections, and actually a fourth with Highway 44 and State Street, and make those full interchanges, removing the signalized intersections. Here's just a little more in-depth example of what Phase Two is proposing. South to north at Interstate 84, there would be the official interchange with the on and off ramps. Franklin Road would be a signalized intersection. Cherry Lane would have an overpass. Eustick Road would be a signalized intersection with a slight reroute of McDermott Road. At McMillan, we'd have another overpass, and followed by completing out that signalized intersection at Chindon and no change to State Street. And then below here is just a cross-section of what that would look like with four 12-foot travel lanes, two in both directions. So why are we talking about this today? It really comes down to funding and timing. And earlier this, this year in the spring, the ITD Board elected to allocate $170 million for Phase Two construction, and that construction's happening quick to, to start in spring of next year, with really the goal that that whole Phase Two would be complete within two to three years. In addition, this, this process has been, been ongoing since the completion of Phase One in 2014, where roughly $90 million has already been spent on the acquisition of right-of-way along the corridor. In addition, the ITD Board directed staff to, to start working on Phase Three as well, and, and through $14 million in Garvey savings, the design process of Phase Three has already begun. Next, I'll talk a little bit about how this impacts ACHD and the city of Meridian. So, so here's a map of, of our capital improvement projects around this corridor. And the red, the red line you see here is Highway 16. The gray dashed line is the county border with Canyon County. Canyon County slightly in the orange. Ada County is in that lighter section. We have the school there right in the center, the new high school. And everything you see with the black dots, the maroon and the blue are different projects that have been identified in our capital improvements plan. Specifically, we've, we currently have three projects highlighted in orange that are currently underway within our integrated five-year work plan. And, and with the announcement of the accelerated funds for this project and the construction, we really took some time to look at what are those next projects that we need to move up as quickly as possible and get incorporated into this, this edition of the integrated five-year work plan. And really what we're focusing with this effort is those intersections and corridors that are highlighted in blue. And so it's really primarily Franklin, Eustick, and then two intersections at Chindon where those intersections are going to be proposed with, with McMillan and Cherry. As I mentioned, those will be overchanges, so there, there should be less impact on the local network at those two locations. So just to summarize, with ITD's accelerated pace, there's going to be a big impact with ACHD, the city of Meridian, and really the whole Ada County in determining what projects move forward and in what times. And we're continuing to monitor this process and plan accordingly with our integrated five-year work. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
I'll add a little bit, as you've probably already heard the discussions publicly and privately, and what Tom alluded to, the additional cost that it's going to take to make all this happen. My hope is that the state of Idaho, in particular, the legislature realizes very quickly the burden, cost burden that all this has, regardless of how soon or far out it is, that it has on the Ada County Highway District and the taxpayers in Kuna and East Boise and Garden City and places that'll ever in a million years benefit from Highway 16. And I don't mean that so much literally, but it's going to basically take, you know, motorists from Canyon County and Gem County that want to get over to the, to 84 and a few other places. And so my preference would be to get these guys to realize what they've done and find some more money out of this giant surplus that the state has right now and put it towards mitigating some of these interchanges and stretches of road that we will otherwise be forced to tell the city of Boise and Kuna and others. By the way, all this stuff you wanted to get your kids to school and to get to work on time and all that stuff, you know, see in five years. And that's kind of me putting it bluntly, but that's kind of the only way I know how to communicate. So away we go.
So, so Tom, a question, if you know, as they start building, and let's say it takes three years from when they start, do they plan to open sections as they complete them? Are, does ACHD have three years to work to get the sections they want done? Or do you have to do some stuff as early as a year and a half from now, based on what they're doing?
Mr. Mayor, there, there have been quite a few different scenarios with those phasings where they can open things at different timing. I think right now, the full intent is to get it all complete as soon as possible. At the staff level, we've also heard that if the design of Phase Three happens fast enough, then ITD might look into just go ahead and building those intersections all at once rather than doing the signalization and then coming back in a few years to complete Phase Three. To President Goldthorpe's point, you know, our, our projects, these, these major arterial projects tend to take at least four years. A perfect example would be with, with Eustick, where we are, you know, actively working west towards the Canyon County line. We have Eustick 10 Mile and Linder right now, which is under a concept study. And so you have a full year for concept, followed by that full year design, full year of right-of-way acquisition, and then construction. So a lot of these projects, those blue ones I highlighted, are, are frankly going to be at least probably three to five years out, just because of the time it takes to design them correctly to acquire that right-of-way and then to construct.
And we hope to get a little help financially between now and then to make more of it happen sooner. And we hope to get a little help financially between now and then to make more of it happen sooner.
Councilman Pro.
Mr. Mayor. Uh, so can you talk with us a little bit about, um, Franklin and 16 intersections? So essentially, they're going to turn that into on-ramps and off-ramps and interchange, but not connect it to the interstate. So you're going to have vehicles going east and west to get on and off of the 10 Mile and Garrity interchanges? And is, okay, that's, from your slideshow, it didn't look like that was what the plan was. So I wanted to understand that. So is, there's going to be an, an interchange at Franklin and 16, and then another one at the interstate and 16?
It's going to be nothing but a ribbon of roads.
Yeah. Just wanted to make sure I was understanding that.
So, uh, Mr. Mayor and Mr. President, I, I, I think, um, we're going to be talking about this, uh, for the next 10 years or more. This is huge, um, extraordinarily big project. Will transform Meridian, uh, probably more than anything else. First of all, don't believe them when they say this is about congestion relief. This will not relieve congestion. Congestion is created by development, and there'll be more and more development. What it will do, it will channel, and we will have much more specific, uh, intense areas on, obviously, State Street, Chindin, Eustick, Franklin, and the interstate. Um, and, uh, we'll have to grapple with that. ACHD and Meridian don't, don't have the ability to use a Garvey type of debt financing to upfront, um, the capital expenditures that would be needed for the, for those arterials and the associated road systems, infrastructure on either side. So we do need to work very closely together to figure out, you know, what tools we do have and to go to legislature and ask for more. W- we, we do have an extraordinary impact fee system, which might be a way of addressing some of that. But, and as Kent says, we do need to go to legislature and make it clear, you know, they won't just go back and forth on 16 or the state system. Uh, you're, you're not, we don't tell them you have to pay a fee to exit a state highway in order to come onto a local road. They get to just come onto it. And so, uh, going to the state and, and helping to figure out in the financing of those, whether some of that state money or, anyway, it's a huge, it's a huge, huge thing that we're going to be talking about. For a long time, you young people, uh, we've been talking about it for a long time because the impacts are, are very significant. And, uh, and we're going to need these tools, whether it's, um, using the extraordinary impact fee statute or whether it's some other, uh, mechanism. Uh, but this needs to be the start of a very long, very in-depth, uh, conversation about the kind of tools that Meridian and, uh, ACHD and Canyon County frankly, uh, needs to have.
Mr. Mayor, uh, toward that end, Tom, um, I had made the request, uh, we could see the breakdown of the funding that we got from the legislature. So if, if we're having the discussion about perhaps going back and seeing if we can, um, acquire some more funding, um, I'd like to know where that 20.4 million has been allocated. And so if we could get that done, so we kind of have a crystal clear picture of exactly where we are, that would be very helpful. So if we could get that sooner rather than later, I would appreciate it. Thank you. And also, if you could share this presentation with the breeding council, thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Uh, my primary concern with Highway 16 is, uh, parts of our community getting cut off from each other and trying our best to mitigate that, um, particularly around the high school and especially the new Fields District. We've talked about needing some, you know, special pedestrian facilities and stuff, but that, that's at the top of my mind. This is coming, but I'm just really worried about huge parts of our community getting amputated off from the rest of Meridian.
Councilman Schrader's concern is, and I'm going to put it in form of a question, is how do we work to make the northwest section of Meridian, it's going to be cut off by Highway 16, a little part of our community through pedestrian and/or other connection points? Any thoughts, suggestions, or if not, considerations as we look at that area?
That's a really good question. And with the, uh, desire and expertise, and I know the, there can't be too much of a change of the priorities of the citizens of Meridian. As I remember when they said pathways was such a high priority just a few years ago. Uh, of course, congestion's probably edged that out a little bit. But, uh, you know, that's, fortunately, we've got a lot of time to fix those connectivity issues before they happen. And I would suggest that making absolutely sure that every school that's approved there and every development that's approved there, we make sure that we have the funds, whether it's amending the stat, the impact fee statute or otherwise, to make it so those kids can ride their bikes to school instead of have to be, you know, put in mama's car just to go 300 yards. But, uh, you know, those sorts of issues, we, we've got a lot of time to develop, and I think it's going to be fun to get it right. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Thank you very much. So on that note, um, Commissioner Hanson was correct, development's going to come. As soon as the announcement that, that instruction is going to come, the development, it already has. We've already approved several communities out there along 16. So my request to you is, I don't know which of the staff members prepares the letters for us on our applications, but if, if they could give us an update more specifically, if, if it has to do with dollars on your part, we could get that information in addition to, is it possible to add some updates about 16 specifically, especially if the application borders 16, as to where we're at in the process in the communication that we receive on our individual applications? That's really where we are, are, that's really the information that we're using on, on those site-specific decisions. So any, any information you want to provide to us on specific applications along that quarter, we would appreciate.
That would be, I hope, well, the staff just heard that. I think that should be absolutely automatic because all we have to do to pull out is a reasonably bad example of, uh, maybe not getting it done right quickly is the OI High School.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Huglan. Yeah, I, I think we've got one good example of, and Miranda and ACG staff worked, and it was in the, it's our five-mile pathway where we're starting to set up, we're widening and going under and making sure that we're in alignment with all the activity requirements for ACHD, how to do that and, and allow that continual pathway to continue without interruption and having to cross a ma- major road like that, which is always a good thing. But I did have a question for you, uh, Chairman, Mr. President, or, or Tom. You know, the infrastructure bill that's in Congress right now, uh, has bipartisan support. Of course, all the politics behind that, I have no idea of the outcome. But is there funding sources coming locally from that infrastructure bill that you're aware of?
No, not yet.
Um, and Mr. Mayor and Mr. President, I, I, I just want to, uh, point out, you guys worked so hard to try and get the Linder overpass built, uh, you know, which should have been built when the interstate was first built. Um, and so now's the time, I think you're, I think Councilmember Schrader is totally right. Meridian's going to have not only that, basically, you already know what it's like to have Meridian north of I-84 and, and south of I-84. And so now is the time to say you want something more than just every mile, a connection. If there's some areas you want connections in the mid-mile, go for it, push for it, try and get it done now because it can be extraordinarily difficult to try and get it afterwards. So, and, and of course, we try to make mid-mile collectors for roadways. Um, and sometimes all we can get is pathways, but, uh, but you know, I, I'd say go through that right now and say, we anticipate this kind of connection needs to be made. ITD, this is what we need done, whether it's an overpass or, or underneath to make sure that the kind of, uh, um, wall, I think that Councilmember Schrader's described it, will separate one part of the community from the other. Doesn't, it can be mitigated a little bit.
You know, one of the other, uh, corridors that's really getting a lot of attention, at least in, at least in the press right now, is South Linder. From Victory to Columbia, there has been literally thousands of homes that, uh, are talked about being platted. And they're so close to each other, these developments, that there's absolutely no reason in the world that I can see that everything from multi-use pathways to other pathways and other solutions can't be conditioned and done with those developments to make it so it's with the new, with the Linder overpass and stuff, that kids can't ride their bikes clear into town from Columbia. I mean, that's going to be a lot of years before it's all done. But, uh, it's just like, uh, probably in about the same stage as 10 Mile right now, maybe slightly behind. But, uh, that I think will be fun for whatever councils and commissions exist between now and then to ensure that there aren't, you know, hundreds of yards of gaps with nothing but a fog line on the road so that effectively puts up a blockade to everybody who wants to walk, bike, or use other kinds of transportation.
Mr. Mayor, so Tom, I, isn't the end, um, expectation here with the Highway 16, that it's an expressway? And it's going to be people are going to get on and they're going to be able to go. And it's not, when everything is said and done, it's not going to have traffic that's going east, west, crossing the expressway. It's going to be a separate entity all the way.
Mr. Mayor, he might not have said that loud enough. Liz, did you hear that?
Yeah, I did, actually. I think she was saying it's an expressway and it won't be stopping.
Yeah.
Are there any further questions?
Thanks, Tom.
And with that, we've reached the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to a chair?
Before you do, I'd, I'd like to thank us all for being here and having such a good discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any?
Yes, I would echo that. Uh, Chairman Goldthorpe, I appreciate, uh, your efforts, director's efforts and, uh, staff's efforts. It was a, uh, productive meeting, and I want to thank you guys coming in, uh, to stick with this. And also, there's still a bunch of food back there, so feel free to, uh, have a little dinner before you leave. Second's for you. No, she's good. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second motion. Motion second, adjourn the meeting in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Say, we guys have it, we are adjourned.